The special meeting, annual reorganization meeting of the Temple City Unified School District Board of Education on this day, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And we would like to call the meeting to order. And let's start with roll call. Member Giorgino?
Here.
Uh, member Espinoza?
Here.
Uh, member Sneed?
Here.
Uh, member Smith?
Here.
Uh, I am here. Student board member, Mr. Munoz?
Here.
All right. Okay. Um, okay. Uh, tonight's meeting is being digitally recorded. And next, we have our pledge of allegiance led by our superintendent, Dr. Art Cuna.
Everybody, please stand. Place your red hand over your heart.
Yes, we did.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Um, next, we have special presentation, board member recognition.
You get to announce your full recognition.
I do.
I was gonna say.
All right. Well, it is my pleasure, uh, to recognize, uh, Vincent Bell as the outgoing president of our Board of Education. This just happens to be my second go-around with you as, uh, president. Um, you got to be, or when I was the assistant super of HR, you were president during one of those terms. And so, um, I don't know about you, but I, I just feel like the, the growth, the confidence, everything else that it was just, everything was so good, uh, this time around. And I think just you all as a board and through the leadership of, of, um, board president and, and all of you, everything is student-centered. Uh, the focus has always been, uh, what we can do for, uh, the community. And I could not ask for a better board to work with. And I, and I kind of feel like, just, uh, just knowing Vince, like, and how he's run our meetings, like, I should really keep this very short and brief and just get right to it. So, uh, but Vince, thank you for everything you've done. I appreciate it.
My, my pleasure. Thank you so much, everyone.
(applause). Hey, doesn't he even like to stand up by himself and take a photo?
I know. You look so nice. Get up there. Yeah.
Yeah. It would be good.
Yes.
It's black.
Oh. What if we all stand?
Yeah, we can all, we can all stand.
If he wants us.
Do you? Oh, we're all coming. You are so good with those eyelids.
Mine are always good.
You couldn't look like you're in the choir. You look at the Rams choir.
There's a story. We'll tell you later.
Is there ties?
There is a story. Richard will tell you. I signed next to him last night. Thank you. Thanks.
(applause).
Okay. Um, next, uh, public comment on agendized and the non-agendized items.
Does not look like we have anything. Uh, so next is our discussion action items. Uh, our superintendent, Dr. Art Cuna, will temporarily preside, uh, for board president nominations.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so we are on item seven, uh, the selection of the board president. Uh, do I have any nominations?
I'll nominate Matt Smith.
Okay. We have a nomination for Matt Smith. Any other nominations? All right. Can I get a motion to nominate Matt Smith as the board president?
We'll make that motion.
Motion removed by Vince Bell. Seconded by Donna Giorgino. Um, and let's, uh, vote on that. So we have, uh, preferential student vote.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Motion carries five-zero. Congratulations, Matt. So now, we have to do a little movement of, uh, seating. So we'll have, uh, Matt and...
I switch sides?
Well, I'll, I'll...
You're, you're just gonna go to the end, right? Or...
Yeah, I go, I trade with some, either Donna or Mary, either or.
So Donna sits here. I sit over there.
I sit where Matt is.
Yeah. You, you can stay where you're at. You're good.
You're gonna move over one.
Wait. Why can't you, why can't she stay?
Because she's supposed to be there. Oh, yeah, you do stay there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just these guys moving over one and then, yeah, you're good.
It's Donna.
Yeah.
No, no, no. So Matt, Matt comes here. Matt comes here, you, Donna moves down, and you go to the end.
Wait. Do we have any, like, a theatrical director who can get us?
Go where Donna is.
Okay, there you go. I have my instructions.
Yeah, just go where Donna is.
Yes, yes.
Matt. Yes. It's like a Christmas thing.
There you go.
Yeah, there we go.
All right, we got it.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We don't do this often.
Let's flip that. And, uh, I'll just grab all that stuff in a sec. Yeah, that's fine. Yep.
This is all Vincent's stuff.
Yeah, we can grab that later.
All right.
Actually, I'm blocking Matt. That's unblocked, so.
There, Vincent.
Oh.
Matt might need the space.
You have to take all your stuff with you.
All right, it's all you, Matt.
There we go, sir.
Okay, with that, we're on to item eight, which is selection of the board vice president. May I have a nomination for, uh, vice president, please?
I would like to nominate member Espinoza.
Okay. And are there any other nominations? No? Then I will go ahead and, uh, ask for a motion in a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Student member Munoz?
Yes.
Yes? And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So the motion care, uh, carries five-zero. Congratulations, Donna.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on now to item ten, secretary of the Board of Education. Dr. Cuna will be appointed to serve as secretary to the Board of Education. May I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll move.
Motion from member Giorgino?
I'll second. Mary, three seconds.
Uh, second from, uh, member Sneed. Um, and that's, oh, we go ahead and take the vote, um, starting first with the preferential vote for student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And then, for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. And opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Congratulations, Matt. (laughter).
Too late.
Yeah. Okay, we are moving on now to item number eleven, which calls for a motion to select Connie Wu to be appointed to, and to serve as assistant secretary to the Board of Education. May I have a motion and a second for Connie Wu, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion from, um, member Bill. Yeah, second from member Giorgino. And, uh, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Uh, preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
And for everybody else, please, uh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Hearing none, so the motion carries five-zero. Congratulations to Connie. With that, we are moving down into item number twelve, which, uh, is, it designates the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month at five-thirty for regular board meetings, although some months only have one meeting based upon the calendar and holidays. Meetings will be held normally in the boardroom here at ninety-seven hundred, where we are right now. May I have a motion to approve the second and fourth Wednesdays?
I'll move. Second.
Motion from member Espinoza and a second from member Sneed?
No.
Oh, board, huh? I'm sorry. Okay.
Student board member.
Very good. Thank you very much. And, um, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All, uh, excuse me, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Okay, so the motion carries five-zero. Congratulations to Connie. With that, we are moving down into item number twelve, which, uh, is, it designates the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month at five-thirty for regular board meetings, although some months only have one meeting based upon the calendar and holidays. Meetings will be held normally in the boardroom here at ninety-seven hundred, where we are right now. May I have a motion to approve the second and fourth Wednesdays?
I'll move. Second.
Motion from member Espinoza and a second from member Sneed?
No.
Oh, board, huh? I'm sorry. Okay.
Student board member.
Very good. Thank you very much. And, um, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All, uh, excuse me, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Okay, so the motion carries five-zero. Okay, moving down to the appointment of representatives by the board president, that's me. So, uh, the first item is item thirteen, appointment of a board representative to county committee on school district organization. And, uh, we, I think this may not apply to us, we're checking, but we'll go ahead and take the vote tonight, just to make sure. So, um, uh, when I, when I Googled more information about this position, it seems that it's, uh, these people are appointed by the county, uh, Board of Education, not the local Board of Education until you remember, county that doesn't meet very often at all. Anyway, so we'll go ahead and take the action tonight, but I have a feeling it's gonna be, uh, canceled. So, um, may I have a, um, oh, I'm gonna go ahead and put my name down as, as, as pointing to the board representative to the county committee on school district organization. Um, may I have a motion and a second, please?
A motion.
I'll second.
Second from, excuse me, member Bill and, uh, member Espinoza on the motion. And we'll go ahead and, uh, take the preferential vote from member Munoz?
Yes.
And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So the motion care, uh, carries five-zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
With that, we are on to item number nine, selection of clerk of the board. May I have a nomination, please?
I'll nominate Donna Giorgino.
Okay. Motion from member Giorgino. Is there any other motion? No? Okay, I will go ahead and call for a motion and then a second, then, please?
I'll motion.
Motion from member Espinoza, second from...
I'll second.
From member Bill. And then we'll go ahead and call for the vote. So preferential vote, uh, Munoz?
Yes.
Student member Munoz, yes?
Yes.
And then, everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? None. So the motion carries five-zero. Good. Congratulations, Donna.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on now to item ten, secretary of the Board of Education. Dr. Cuna will be appointed to serve as secretary to the Board of Education. May I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll move.
Motion from member Giorgino?
I'll second.
Second from, uh, member Sneed. Um, and that's, oh, we go ahead and take the vote, um, starting first with the preferential vote for student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And then, for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So the motion care, uh, carries five-zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
With that, we are on to item number nine, selection of clerk of the board. May I have a nomination, please?
I'll nominate Donna Giorgino.
Okay. Motion from member Giorgino. Is there any other motion? No? Okay, I will go ahead and call for a motion and then a second, then, please?
I'll motion.
Motion from member Espinoza, second from...
I'll second.
From member Bill. And then we'll go ahead and call for the vote. So preferential vote, uh, Munoz?
Yes.
Student member Munoz, yes?
Yes.
And then, everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And, uh, opposed? None. So the motion carries five-zero. Good. Congratulations, Donna.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on now to item ten, secretary of the Board of Education. Dr. Cuna will be appointed to serve as secretary to the Board of Education. May I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll move.
Motion from member Giorgino?
I'll second. Mary, three seconds.
Uh, second from, uh, member Sneed. Um, and that's, oh, we go ahead and take the vote, um, starting first with the preferential vote for student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And then, for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Congratulations, Matt. (laughter).
Too late.
Yeah. Okay, we are moving on now to item number eleven, which calls for a motion to select Connie Wu to be appointed to s, and to serve as assistant secretary to the Board of Education. May I have a motion and a second for Connie Wu, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion from, um, member Bill. Yeah, second from member Giorgino. And, uh, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Uh, preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Congratulations, Matt. (laughter). Shouldn't make a nomination?
Too late.
Yeah. Okay, we are moving on now to item number eleven, which calls for a motion to select Connie Wu to be appointed to s, and to serve as assistant secretary to the Board of Education. May I have a motion and a second for Connie Wu, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion from, um, member Bill. Yeah, second from member Giorgino. And, uh, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Uh, preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
And for everybody else, please, uh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Hearing none, so the motion carries five-zero. Congratulations to Connie. With that, we are moving down into item number twelve, which, uh, is, it designates the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month at five-thirty for regular board meetings, although some months only have one meeting based upon the calendar and holidays. Meetings will be held normally in the boardroom here at ninety-seven hundred, where we are right now. May I have a motion to approve the second and fourth Wednesdays?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion from member Espinoza and a second from member Sneed? Oh, board, huh? I'm sorry. Okay.
Student board member.
Very good. Thank you very much. And, um, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All, uh, excuse me, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Hearing none, so the motion carries five-zero. Congratulations to Connie. With that, we are moving down into item number twelve, which, uh, is, it designates the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month at five-thirty for regular board meetings, although some months only have one meeting based upon the calendar and holidays. Meetings will be held normally in the boardroom here at ninety-seven hundred, where we are right now. May I have a motion to approve the second and fourth Wednesdays?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion from member Espinoza and a second from member Sneed?
No.
Oh, board, huh? I'm sorry. Okay.
Student board member.
Very good. Thank you very much. And, um, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All, uh, excuse me, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that motion, uh, and they, all opposed? Anybody? No? Okay, so the motion carries five-zero. Okay, moving down to the appointment of representatives by the board president, that's me. So, uh, the first item is item thirteen, appointment of a board representative to county committee on school district organization. And, uh, we, I think this may not apply to us, we're checking, but we'll go ahead and take the vote tonight, just to make sure. So, um, uh, when I, when I Googled more information about this position, it seems that it's, uh, these people are appointed by the county, uh, Board of Education, not the local Board of Education until you remember, county that doesn't meet very often at all. Anyway, so we'll go ahead and take the action tonight, but I have a feeling it's gonna be, uh, canceled. So, um, may I have a, um, oh, I'm gonna go ahead and put my name down as, as, as pointing to the board representative to the county committee on school district organization. Um, may I have a motion and a second, please?
A motion.
I'll second.
Second from, excuse me, member Bill and, uh, member Espinoza on the motion. And we'll go ahead and, uh, take the preferential vote from member Munoz?
Yes.
And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that motion, uh, and they, all opposed? Anybody? No? Okay, so the motion carries five-zero. Okay, moving down to the appointment of representatives by the board president, that's me. So, uh, the first item is item thirteen, appointment of a board representative to county committee on school district organization. And, uh, we, I think this may not apply to us, we're checking, but we'll go ahead and take the vote tonight, just to make sure. So, um, uh, when I, when I Googled more information about this position, it seems that it's, uh, these people are appointed by the county, uh, Board of Education, not the local Board of Education until you remember, county that doesn't meet very often at all. Anyway, so we'll go ahead and take the action tonight, but I have a feeling it's gonna be, uh, canceled. So, um, may I have a, um, oh, I'm gonna go ahead and put my name down as, as, as pointing to the board representative to the county committee on school district organization. Um, may I have a motion and a second, please?
A motion.
I'll second.
Second from, excuse me, member Bill and, uh, member Espinoza on the motion. And we'll go ahead and, uh, take the preferential vote from member Munoz?
Yes.
And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Okay, so the motion carries five-zero. Moving on to item fourteen, calls for appointment of board representative to the Los Angeles County Schools Trustees Association. And I've kind of been doing that, and I will continue to do that this coming year unless somebody wants to jump in and put their name. No? Okay. So may I have a motion and a second, please, for me to take that position?
I'll move.
Motion from member Giorgino and a second from...
I'll second.
Member Bill. And I will go ahead and call for the vote, preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Yes. And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed?
Aye.
At hearing none, the motion carries five-zero. Moving on to item fifteen, employee relations. And this calls for the, uh, appointment of Dr. Art Cuna and Richard Loman to serve as board representatives and employer, employee relations with authority to delegate representation to a manager, management team member. May I have a motion and a second to appoint, uh, Art and Richard?
I'll motion. I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion from member Espinoza, second from member Sneed. And I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote, preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for all else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? So the motion carries five-zero. Uh, moving on to item number sixteen, calls for appointment of a board representative to the Temple City Schools Foundation. And I have spoken with Mary about that, and she is interested in taking the position. So I would ask that we have a motion and a second for Mary to take that position.
I'll move.
I'll second.
So we have a motion from member Bill and a second from member Giorgino. Any comments or questions? No? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And anybody opposed? No, so the motion carries five-zero. Moving on to, uh, item number seventeen, appointment of a board representative to the schools, district, city standing committee. And, um, I would like to appoint Donna and myself to serve as representatives to that organi, to that committee. Um, is there, can I have a motion and a second?
A motion.
We have a motion from member Espinoza and a second.
I'll, I'll...
Beautiful.
I'll second.
Yeah. Any comments or questions on that? No, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
And if for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, so the motion carries five-zero. Moving on to item number eighteen, calls for appointment of board representative to the Temple City Council PTA. And for that, I would like to have a motion and a second to appoint Melissa to serve as the board representative. May I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion from member Giorgino, second from member Bill. Any comments or questions? No, then I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote, preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No, so the motion carries five-zero. Moving on to item number nineteen, where you have to keep me honest on this, this calls for, um, annual certification of signatures, oh, I'm sorry, not this, annual certification of signatures, verifies signatures of governing board members and authorizes Art Cuna, Connie Wu, Richard Loman, Stacy Ayers, Veronica Garrison, and Marisol Cortez to sign warrants, contracts, orders for payment, notices of employment, and related documents as approved by the Board of Education. And this is a, uh, I need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Member Giorgino, second from member Espinoza. Any comments or questions? No, then I'm gonna go ahead and start with the preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And then with that, we have a roll call vote, um, starting with member Espinoza.
Yes.
Um, member Giorgino?
Yes.
Uh, I'm a yes, member Sneed?
Yes.
And member Bill?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously five-zero. Uh, moving on to item twenty, um, which, uh, will authorize the director of purchasing to sign purchase orders under one thousand dollars. Uh, may I have a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'll move.
Motion from member Sneed and second from...
I'll second.
Member Bill. Uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and go forward with the vote, preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, for the rest, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And anybody opposed? No, so the motion carries five-zero. Moving on to item twenty-one, miscellaneous, this is to designate management confidential or other representative positions, and there's a list here of about thirty or so of these, uh, positions, so I'm gonna just go through it real quickly. This includes alternative school principal, assistant superintendent business services, assistant superintendent educational services, assistant superintendent human resource services, business services supervisor, coordinator of health services, curriculum coordinator, director of child development programs, director of facility services and maintenance, director of fiscal services, director of food services, director of human resource services, director of purchasing, director of special education, director of technology services, director of student support and engagement, elementary assistant principal, elementary principal, executive assistant one, executive assistant three, high school assistant principal, high school principal, human resource technician one, human resource technician two, intermediate assistant principal, intermediate principal, program slash inclusion specialist, special education, public information officer, superintendent, superintendent, uh, and superintendent of custodial services. May I have a motion to approve these positions, please?
So move.
Motion from member Bill.
I'll second.
Second from, uh, member Giorgino. Uh, any comments or questions on this? No, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote, then, starting with preferential vote for student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? No, so the motion carries five-zero. Moving on to item twenty-two, which calls for a motion to appoint Connie Wu as district representative and Art Cuna as alternate to the West San Gabriel Valley Benefits Joint Powers Authority, West San Gabriel Valley Workers Compensation, uh, Joint Powers Authority, and West San Gabriel Valley Liability and Property Joint Powers Authority. May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll, I'll motion.
Motion from member Espinoza and a second from member Giorgino. Any comments or questions? No, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote, then, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And then with that, we have a roll call vote, um, starting with member Espinoza.
Yes.
Um, member Giorgino?
Yes.
Uh, I'm a yes, member Sneed?
Yes.
And member Bill?
Yes.
Okay, so the mo, motion carries unanimously five-zero. Uh, moving on to item twenty, um, which, uh, will authorize the director of purchasing to sign purchase orders under one thousand dollars. Uh, may I have a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'll move.
Motion from member Sneed and second from...
I'll second.
Member Bill. Uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and go forward with the vote, preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? No, so the motion carries five-zero. And with that, I need a motion to, uh, close the annual reorganization meeting. May I have a motion and a second to approve?
I'll move.
Wait a second. I heard Donna Giorgino for the motion.
I didn't hear you.
It was a split-second timing. And a second from member Espinoza. Uh, I don't imagine there's any comments or questions about that, so I'll just go ahead and call for the vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No, so the motion carries five-zero. And with that, I need a motion to, uh, close the annual reorganization meeting. May I have a motion and a second to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Wait a second. I heard Donna Giorgino for the motion.
I didn't hear you.
It was a split-second timing. And a second from member Espinoza. Uh, I don't imagine there's any comments or questions about that, so I'll just go ahead and call for the vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No? Okay, so the motion carries five-zero. We are adjourned at five-twenty-one, and then we'll be recessing in, or, starting the next meeting at nine minutes.
You gotta hear a lot of talking.
Yeah. But you did it so calm and well. Like, for me, I'm always frantic. So thanks. Somewhere in the next twelve months, I know Susannah's gonna ask for a photo of the board. So can I do that now?
Oh, sure. Can we get, you guys up for a photo?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you want us behind the desk or further?
Right here.
No, it's, it's fine. The whole, the whole board knows. Every year, I get some mild genuses. I'm glad you accepted. That was, that was our concern, is we thought, oh, I wonder if you all want to do it.
Oh, no. I think it's great.
Okay, great. Sometimes you're a little shy. Great. That's good.
All right. People...
Which one's... Oh, it's, it's... We're good then, right? Donna? Oh, I, I missed that.
Where did you want you in the seats for, or no?
No. Is it in the front?
We'll go for it.
It's next to our table.
Well, Artie has that. But what was it again?
Okay. Next to our table. I couldn't find you, and I knew it was one of them.
That's why I wanted to do it. Okay.
Should we stand how we sit?
Yeah, I, I think so. Okay.
In your seated position, I'm sorry.
Great. Thank you. We're good for the year.
I did. I did, of course, yeah. It's, it was at seven o'clock. I was back, I get back at, um, get back usually by four o'clock, I'm at home.
Oh.
Yeah.
school principal, human resource technician one, human resource technician two, intermediate assistant principal, intermediate principal, program slash inclusion specialist, special education, public information officer, superintendent, superintendent and superintendent of custodial services. May I have a motion to approve these positions, please?
So move.
Motion from Member Bill.
I'll second.
Second from Donna, from Member Georgina. Any comments or questions on this? No, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote then, starting with preferential vote for student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody else all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? No, so the motion carries five zero. Moving on to item twenty-two, which calls for a motion to appoint Connie Wu as district representative and Art Cuna as alternate to the West San Gabriel Valley Benefits Joint Powers Authority, West San Gabriel Valley Workers Compensation, Joint Powers Authority, and West San Gabriel Valley Liability and Property Joint Powers Authority. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Oh, a motion.
A motion from Member Espinoza, and a second from Member Georgina. Any comments or questions? Now, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote then. Student Board Member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And if there are anybody else all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? Okay, so the motion carries five zero. Moving on to item twenty-three, which calls for a motion to adopt board policies through December two thousand twenty-six. May I have a motion in a second to approve, please?
Second.
Motion from Member Sneed, I'm sorry, and second from Member Munoz, Board Member Munoz. And any questions? No, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote then. Preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody else all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, so the motion carries five zero. And with that, I need a motion to close the annual reorganization meeting. May I have a motion in a second to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
I heard Donna and Georgina for the motion.
I didn't hear you.
It was split second timing. And a second from Member Espinoza. I don't imagine there's any comments or questions about that, so I'll just go ahead and call for the vote. Student Board Member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay. And for everybody else all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? Okay, so the motion carries five zero. We are adjourned at five twenty-one, and then we'll be recessing, or starting the next meeting at nine minutes.
You gotta hear a lot of talking.
Yeah. You did it so calm and well. Like, for me, I'm always for the. Somewhere in the next twelve months, I know Susannah's gonna ask for a photo of the board, so can I do that now? Oh, sure. Can we get that? You guys up for a photo?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want us behind the desk or further?
Right here.
No, it's fine. The whole board knows. I'm glad you accepted. That was our concern, is we thought, oh, I wonder if you all wanna do it?
Oh, no, I think it's.
Okay, great. Sometimes you're a little shy. Great, that's good.
Oh, I missed that.
Should we stand how we sit?
Yeah, I think so. Great. We're good for the year.
I did. I did, of course, yeah. It was at seven o'clock. I was back, I get back at. Get back usually by four o'clock, I'm at home.
Oh.
Yeah.
Temple City Infight School District on Wednesday, December tenth. May I go ahead and take the roll call vote? Member Espinoza?
Here.
Member Georgina?
Here.
I'm here, Member Sneed?
Here.
And Member Bill?
Here.
And then the student board member Munoz?
Here.
Okay. There are now one session. Okay, tonight's meeting is being digitally recorded, and tonight, the pledge will be led by student Noah Ordaze. Student Ordaze.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as.
Thank you, Noah.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are on to item five, changes to the agenda. Art, do we have any changes to make?
No changes.
Okay, no changes. So with that, I'll go ahead and call for a motion to approve the agenda. May I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll move.
Second.
So I have a motion from Member Georgina, a second from Member, student board member Xavier Munoz, and we'll start the vote with student board member Munoz. Vote?
Oh, yes.
Okay, yes. Okay, then for everybody else, please, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? No, so the motion carries five zero. With that on, with that, we are on to special recognition, and tonight, we are gonna recognize two groups, the Temple City Girls Tennis Team and the Alternative Education Program. With that, I'll let Art take it over.
Well, yes, that would be great. First off, I wanna say that I don't always get out to see a lot of the tennis matches, but it is really exciting to watch, and I don't know how Coach Tam, is he back there? Like, how you stay so cool? I, every, every, I just keep asking him, like, what's our score? What's our score? And he just, he's so cool about everything and knowing just how, how well our girls are gonna perform. So that being said, I would like to call up our high school team to recognize our girls tennis on their winning of CIF, so.
My name is Eric Chen, I'm the athletic director at the high school. Again, I just wanna congratulate our girls and Coach Tan on a great season. We don't win CIF very often, and when Coach Tan told me, he's like, we have a chance. I was like, really? We do! And he's like, we have a good chance. I'm like, alright, let's go! And then after the first round, we had, our first or second round, I remember, we had our pep rally, and right before our pep, or right during our pep rally, he's like, everyone, it's in the bag. I was like, oh my goodness, I don't know if you wanna say that, and the girls were kinda nervous, I was like, okay. But I was confident in our girls, I'm confident in Coach Tan, he did an awesome job. I just want Coach Tan to come up here and just say a few words.
Hello. For those of you who don't know me, I'm actually a Temple City alumni, I went to Longden, Oak, and Temple City High School. First, one more time, can you guys please give a quick round of applause to our CIF Division Three champions for girls' tennis? We had a honestly storybook season this year, we started this preseason five oh, we had some great additions to the varsity team this year, and really, I wanna applaud the girls for just putting their head down and putting in the work when we knew we could do it. We got placed in Division Three, which is last year's, and those terms would be Division Two, so honestly, one of the best schools in the SoCal region. I was a little worried, but after we won our first game thirteen-five, and our girls played phenomenally, I think if we just kept up our form, we would've won. The girls, again, a hundred percent did the work. I'm just here sometimes, I watch, and I'm like, yeah, you know, I don't know if I do much, I kinda just buy the food for the girls, make sure they're, make sure they're, you know, ready, and I really just wanted the girls to think of tennis when they played and nothing else, so that's all I could do as a coach, and again, we just won. I was joking when I said we had in the bag, I was always nervous, but we did play a team that we beat in the preseason, and I know the girls were really excited. Some of the girls, they went out during that rainstorm, where we waited a week, they rolled down the courts themselves, and then I kinda watched them practice, and then, you know, in the three hours that we could practice, they kinda did, and that was kind of it. You know, that really shows the dedication they had in winning this year's CIF championships. The only second team in the school's history to win CIF tennis, again, please give me one more round of applause for our team. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna call each of the girls just by name, just one time, 'cause I know it's a very special moment, and no particular order.
Maybe do it when they do the certificate.
Oh, okay. Oh, their certificate, okay.
Eric told me everything, yes.
Yeah, I wanna make sure it's the first one. There's supposed to be four of these, Marie? Yeah, three, oh, there's four.
Okay. Yes.
Do you wanna call them out?
Yeah, I can call them out.
Okay.
Sorry if MS will be your name.
Sunny's on.
Shake his hands.
Over here, and your certificate.
She actually will not be here, so Daisy Wong, but we just wanna give her a round of applause. Trinity Tran. Sure Steve Milak. Denise Quatch.
Denise, congratulations.
Kayla Fan. Lee Julie Niyay.
Lee, congratulations.
Sophie Ying.
Sophie, congratulations.
Ariana Lau.
Ariana, congratulations.
Eliana Lee. Samantha Kim.
Samantha, congratulations.
Amy Key.
Amy, congratulations.
Sophia Han.
Sophia, congratulations.
Yalini Arunaz.
Yalini, congratulations.
And then Amelie Jin.
Now, congratulations. Sit over here, we're gonna get the picture taken of the board.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Am I in this?
Yes, yes, you're in it.
Get down, get down on the front row. There we go.
I knew you wanted the pictures.
I know you did. Eric, this way, there you go, and Elena, see you. Perfect, we picked, everybody's got their, yep, good. Alright, here we go. Keep smiling. Get all the fillings in your teeth. Good, thank you.
Yes, he sleeps, you know, he sleeps, he sleeps with it.
Okay, so, next up, we have our outstanding alternative education principal, Ms. Jessica Gould, and at some point, I'm gonna be saying Dr. Gould still, right?
Actually, yes.
Okay, alright, good, 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 good. She's gonna share. Her and her students are gonna share some of what, of the amazing things going on at the alternative education sites, DDSLC and ATP. Virtual, yes.
I am so lucky that I have four amazing schools and dedicated folks. Okay, there we go. I'm very, very lucky that I have four amazing schools, all of these dedicated people. In our audience, we have representation from all of our schools today. So, as you can see, we try to help all the students learn, and it's oftentimes sort of an outside-the-box way of doing it. So, every one of our students comes to us needing just a little something different, and that is our job, is to sort of make that connection for them and help them, help them do it. Okay, that's a pointer, now I'm gonna, which, which one, does that click? Okay.
Sorry, give me a quick tutorial here, sorry.
Just click for me, not nod to you, that's fine. Okay, so, we help our students in two major ways. One of them is that we help them gain skills, and then the other is by providing opportunities, all kinds of different opportunities that you wouldn't necessarily just get in, you know, a regular classroom. So, at the Dr. Dexter's Learning Center, we do things like cover letters and resumes and literally saying, hey, McDonald's is hiring when kids are wanting a part-time job and getting that experience. We have practice interview skills and, and just all those things that they're gonna need for that next step in life. Respect and empathy and service-oriented and innovation, those are our acronyms for our rise, and so we work on it in all kinds of different ways. The fact that we have three schools on campus during the day, and then we have schools on campus at night, are, there's a lot of integration, and there's a lot of working together, and so teamwork is another one of those things that we end up doing. You'll oftentimes see our ATP students, our DDSLC students, playing basketball together. Self-advocacy, that's another big one, that we really work with our students on. Okay, what are the, what is it that you wanna do? How do we help you make your dreams come true, and what does that path look like? In our virtual academy, we started going back in person, which was a really big deal, 'cause we hadn't done this since before the pandemic. And so now our students are getting one-on-one attention again, but they're also allowed to come and socialize with us, so a lot of them take advantage when we're having a big social event, you know, pizza party at the end of a holiday, and they also join us and stuff, so these are nice opportunities for them. And they also go on every field trip, they're given that opportunity as well. And then Ms. Aioli beats with them after the teachers met with them, and so they're getting some real individualized attention. At our ATP program, our adults are. At our ATP program, our adults are learning how to be as independent as possible, so from cooking and grilling and house care and laundry and personal health and money management, all those skills help our students be as independent as they can on the next adventure of life here. Our adult community, so our folks come to us and they want to learn English, and so they want to learn to speak English and read English and write English, but on top of that, it's a social time, too, because the, the community, when you're new to a community, it's, it's nice to make friends. And so this, of course, we provide at the end of each of our quarters a potluck, and then we have other, other social opportunities. And one of the big things that we instituted this year is that we are doing small, kind of like meet-your-community activities, and so Mr. Wu, you see him leading it in that one, where it's, where can you find the sheriff's station, and where is, what is Parks and Recreation, and here's some of the special things that we do in our community, like the Camellia Festival, and so just sort of introducing folks to who we are. Okay, this portion about opportunities, I'm going to actually allow the students to speak, because of course, that's why we're here, so.
Basically, it was just what Ms. Gould said, summing up everything that we do here at a Dr. Doug Learning Center, which is, one of the things was, they provide academic counseling, which is Ms. Ioli, and with her help, I'm actually now graduating very early. I'll be graduating this month and, on the nineteenth, which is half a year early than what I expected, but with Ms. Gould's help, Ms. Ioli's help, and just Dr. Doug Learning Center staff, I will be graduating early. A lot of things that we do is, we go on field trips to college fairs, which we'll be like getting opportunities to like, learn about schools that we never learned about, just seeking new things. And then, a lot of help that we get is with jobs, they very, they push us a lot with jobs, they help us a lot. And actually, with their help, I recently just got a job, they taught me a lot about interviews, they're very helpful, they're very kind, I don't see them as teachers, more as like, an adult that I could really trust, and which is one of the things that's really good here at Dr. Doug Learning Center. And with their help, I've changed my whole life around, grades were falling, but with Ms. Gould's help, Ms. Ioli's help, I'm now graduating early, and then, I'm now looking at colleges, and with Ms. Ioli's help, I would be, yeah, going to colleges soon, so, thank you.
Some of you may not know, I mean, I'm Temple City alum, but I graduated early myself. I just was ready for a new adventure, and so I very much appreciate our students that need a slightly different path than just a traditional way. All right, so our virtual academy, I'm actually going to have Ms. Ioli talk, because there's a whole bunch of things that she does that specifically help our students, so she's going to come over and talk, and I'm giving you then what she's just touching on, just so that you can see some of the cool things that we do to help prepare our students.
Hi. Hi, everyone. So, I'm really happy to be here, and this is my fourth year with alternative ed, and I'm learning every day as well. And so in your packet, we just kind of gave you a little bit of a snippet of some of the things that we work on. So one of the things that I like to do is develop a four-year plan with my students. So you'll see that we've got the adult school four-year plan, so that they can work on their grad requirements when they come to us as adults. On the back of that, I use this credit checkbox and post-high school planning for our learning center, from other types of schools as well, sometimes with our virtual kids, it just kind of gives them a different way on how to understand their transcript and to look at it from a different point of view, and not just the numbers in the classes. Another sample of the four-year plan is that I use a lot also, and it's also driven for post-high school planning as well, like, understanding how the credits work. Again, we pair this with their transcripts, so they're looking at their transcript as well, when they're writing this down, and they do the work, I don't do it for them. I help them read their transcript, and they learn how to, to plan, and, and they change it, which is fine, but it just kind of gives them some kind of sense of direction to start with. Personal statements, basically writing about yourself, anyone who's in high school knows or remembers how difficult it is to answer those personal essays when you're applying for colleges, so we really spend a lot of time working on that and talking about what universities are looking for, and how they can make it personal, because not every university has an opportunity to interview you when you're applying. For PCC, we have PCC and also partnerships with other community colleges, but this is one sample of how we help prepare for the application workshop. So again, the students know what they're doing ahead of time, they're just not going in there and doing an application workshop. The other one that we do, we have a great partnership also with PCC, is the concurrent enrollment, where we encourage our students to take courses for free while they're in high school, and that's really been a big push for us, because again, it's free. And it helps them to just kind of get some of that general education course out of the way, and it allows us also to, with a limit, to also give them some elective credit on their transcripts. So it looks great on a college resume, on a job application, and it exposes them to what it would be like after high school. Again, Pasadena, the non-credit and credit summit activities that we work with as well, with Pasadena City College, and the back of that, you'll see Citrus. Citrus is a great school that we've partnered with as well, and they really work well with our students in providing post-high school planning for them, too. They come in and they do the application with us. We'll be taking tours next semester, next quarter actually, at Citrus as well as at Pasadena City College, walking tours, just to kind of familiarize them with the campus and to see what programs they offer. And again, to keep their options open. Some of them changed their mind quite a bit, but I know many of us have changed our minds, we thought we'd be doing something in our career, and then did something completely different, and that's okay, but we want them to at least start to think about these things. The other one that you have in front of you is a sample of the National College Fair that we just actually, we try to go to once a year, and we just went to one right before Thanksgiving break, and it was great, because it was at the Galaxy Training Center, I love soccer, so I'm not biased, but anyway. So it was a wonderful experience, because they didn't just have universities there, they had trade schools, they had different types of programs for our students to learn about. And what we did is we prepared them ahead of time by giving them these kind of questions so that they could get some informative information and not just go and talk to them informally. On the back is one of the examples of the schools that we've had, that was at the college fair. And then the last couple of things here are just some samples of how we prepare them for post-high school planning. Some of the things that we look at, financial aid is a big issue, you know, we want to focus on that as well, so that our students get the most money out of it when they're planning to go to college, because it's expensive. And so we want to make sure that they're prepared financially as well, so that they can follow their dreams. Trade schools is a big thing as well, too, and so we want to expose them to different types of trade schools, military options, so it's not just about the traditional college student. We want them to, to make informative decisions based on what their goals and their interests are for their careers. Lastly, and I'm not going to read it, because I'll get all emotional like I usually do when a student brags about us, she couldn't be here today, this is our virtual academy student, but she wrote a letter to you explaining how she felt when she first started her freshman year with the virtual academy, and how she feels about the program and the opportunities of having a unique program here at Temple City has enriched her life and has helped her to reach her goals. And lastly, I just want to thank all of you, because without your support, without our staff's support, we couldn't make this happen for our students, so thank you.
Okay, our next school is our ATP school, and so I've got Caitlin, who is going to come up here and share some of the awesome opportunities.
My name is Caitlin Cheng. One of my favorite parts of the adult transition program and the coffeehouse experience, making co, is making coffee and taking customers' orders. It helped me learn in real-life skills that would be useful after the adult transition program, especially if I ever wanted to work in a coffee shop like Starbucks or Coffeebean and Tea Leaf. I've learned how to use the coffee machine, handle money, and give customers the right change, even when they pay with larger bills. It's also taught me how important it is to be friendly and stay positive, and to leave bad days at home. The experience takes patience, especially with, when customers come, when customers come in wanting coffee, tea, or pastries. Being an artist also means a lot to me. Art isn't easy. Deciding what to draw and taking the time to create meaningful, something meaningful can be challenging. It takes patient skills and steady hands. Whether you're drawing for fun or creating artwork for people, to buy it, it can take a long time to finish a piece, but it's worth it when someone wants to take your art home and display it proudly. Creating items can also be a lot of work. You have to make sure you have the right, the materials, enough supplies, and a clear idea of what you want to make. Some projects can take days or even weeks, especially if you're recreating a character from a movie, show, or toy using pearly beads or Lego sets. It takes time, patience, and creativity. Visiting different job sites this year in the adult transition program has really opened our eyes to new opportunities. It helped us think about what kind of jobs we might want in the future, and taught us how to look for job applications, collect business cards, and communicate with employers. Exploring jobs, whether in retail, a salon, or customer service, helps us understand what skills we need and what kind of environment we want to work in.
Okay, and our last school, Mr. Wu.
Hey, guys. Hello, hi. So this year, we graduated with students and felt their breakthroughs. We hosted playful celebrations embracing different cultures. Parent workshops for nervous parents were district tailor-made. PCC Consortium College transitioned our students. These are just a few things we do. There you go.
I told them all to be swift, so there we go. All right, so thank you very much. We really appreciate that we have this opportunity to sort of just showcase some of the cool things that are happening with our schools, and right now, we're going to share with you. Our ATP students are getting ready, thank you, Sarah, go ahead and let me have them pick something. You're getting an ornament from our ATP students that, that they've been making. They're going to Selpa Boutique on the sixteenth, and they're going to be selling different things, so you've got Lifesaver Man, you've got Globe ornaments, there's all kinds of fun, different ornaments that they have been making and that they're getting ready to sell next week, so that is one of those awesome things. So, there's all kinds of different ways for us to contribute to society, for us to, of course, you know, our jobs, our paths, and so that's really what we try to do, is help our folks think outside the box and come up with something that they're passionate about. So thank you very much.
I have some certificates of recognition for the students, in no particular order, Caitlin Cheng. She was the easy one to figure out. Stand over there, we're going to take a picture in just a minute. Next is Daniel Bill.
He's not here.
He's not here, okay. And Angel.
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 Angel Mendez.
Yeah, and Noah Ordez.
Yay.
Everybody, Ellen, come over, we're going to take a good picture.
Can. Hi, now, our ESL, she stands back, too. So, so Michelle, can we have the class come up? Oh, you guys are going to kind of stand behind the kids.
I'm coming. I can like fit in.
I don't know, I'm getting them.
You want to start?
Hi. I know, I know. Six-two, just imagine. These are all our KICs for level three. I think I want, so they're getting ready to graduate. Do you want to get the, did I not take it for you?
Okay. I don't want to block anybody, I don't want to block anybody.
I don't want to block you, oh, no.
Okay, here we go. While I'm doing this, Principal Gould, I just want to tell you, one of the biggest blessings for me is, is having Nicholas Coda help me with lights on Temple City. He is a recent graduate of your adult high school, so he is a real jewel for me, so thank you.
All right, all my folks, you are free to sit down now.
Sorry about that.
That's great. Chairs are hard to maneuver.
Yeah.
Oh, we do go to trade schools, we're going next month, also, a couple months, too, so, so you know.
That is awesome. Okay, so now we are on to item eight on our agenda, which is the public comment session, and I do have one request we received from Arun, who would like to come up and talk about the tennis court access. Arun, is he here? Oh, right there.
Hello, everyone, thank you. Thanks for, actually, my, thanks for the time. I actually, you know, I, I play multiple roles, one of them is like being a tennis coach at Temple City High School, I, I teach JV, JV team, and I also like have my daughter in the team, she's in the varsity team, she was here like, you know, a few minutes ago, and like, you know, we have been using the tennis court like for like, as far as I can remember, like, probably like last ten, ten-plus years. But like, you know, we, I think we spoke about this earlier, like probably about five years ago, during the pandemic, that the tennis courts were locked for the public access, so the public cannot access it anymore. So, I, I'm not really sure why that happened, because I know like, you know, other schools in the area, like, you know, Arcadia, all the courts are open, you know? Even though I'm here in Temple City, like live like, you know, two minutes from school, but if I want to practice tennis, or if I want my kid to practice tennis, we have to go all the way to Arcadia. I do not know why that's, that's the, that's happening. So basically, like, that's one of my questions, is like, you know, why, or like, is there a, is there, is there a way we can actually keep it open for public? Because a lot of my students also ask the same question, like, you know, they're all part of the team, like, you know, but like, after five, six, they cannot use it anymore, because like, you know, the lights are not on, the courts are being rented out to like, you know, other people, like, you know, who are not even part of the school, or like school district or anything. So, school is obviously getting some money, I guess, school or, school district, whatever it is. So, and also, like, I know, like, we are actually building four new courts, I'm not sure exactly, like, you know, how they are going to be utilized, is there a, I'm just like looking for some, some kind of answers, why we are doing what we are doing.
We're, so, we're not really at, able to respond to you here, because it's just a school board meeting, and we can only address things that are agendized, but I'm sure if you talk to the district office, they can help out in terms of directing you, in terms of getting that information.
Okay, so who's it I talked to, like, you know, in order to get the answer?
We'll, we'll follow up with you.
Is your phone number on that sheet?
Oh, yeah, I have my phone number and everything, you know, so, yeah, if you could actually follow up, that would be great, actually.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're now on to item nine, community update, and I really don't have anything to provide, other than Livia DePaula, the student from Temple City High School, who's going to be part of the Rose Court, going down Colorado Boulevard, so look for her there, and that's what I have. So now we're going to move on to item number ten, bargaining unit comments. We're going to start first with TCEA, Elias Borjelli, Elias, do you have anything?
Happy to be here.
Happy to be here, good, all right. A happy person is a good person. Okay, we'll move on to CSE, EA one oh five, Denise. Uh, okay, we'll move on to C, C S E, E A one oh five, Denise.
Happy holidays.
Okay, thank you. And then C S E A eight twenty-three, I don't think Jazz is here, right? No. Okay. Very good. That, we're on to board member comments. We're going to start tonight with Melissa Espinoza. Melissa? Oh, cheated you, didn't I? I'm so sorry. Thank you very much.
No. Business services.
Oh. Yeah, I got that. Connie, okay. Connie?
Here. Good evening, Board President Miss Smith, and Board Members, and Dr. Kuna, everybody. And first of all, congratulations for Denise. She was nominated and approved as a new president of our C S A one oh five. So, we are looking forward, we are looking forward to working with you. And the district has received two hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred ten dollars through the Learning Recover Immunity Block Grant, part of the state effort to restore previously reduced funding. Originally, the fund established in back to June twenty twenty-two, the program is support learning recovery initiative and promote the social and emotional well-being for students and staff impacted by COVID nineteen. Originally, our allocation for this grant is over five million dollars. The state cut it, so we lost a couple of thousand dollars. But now the state is restored the original cut the form, uh, cut the funding we receive right now. Marissa and I, we entered the Amber Students Council meeting, and we spoke with over fifty kids and from the third, fourth, and fifth grade as our continued effort to seeking for the input for the meal improvement program. So here's a list of kids like enjoy for the meal, pizza, subway sandwich, baked chips served with hot dog, orange chicken, and a holiday cookies requested by monthly. So that's good. And then they also gave us a wish list, and, and I'm very proud of them. And then one of them is more vegetables such as tomato, lettuce, and potatoes. That's good. I'm glad to hear our students like veg, and vegetable brown rice, additional cheese in the macaroni cheese, and frozen fruit cups with expanded favorite options. And, and then we will conduct additional survey in January, and our plan is for the elementary school will be in person, and secondary for the Oak and the high school will be online. Recently, our district consultant, Nordstrom, they released a community survey regarding our potential future bond. The survey is still opening, so if the community members have time, we are welcome to finish the survey, and the district is willing to hear your voice. And I want to take this opportunity, express my appreciation for Amber Wong. And she located in a high school, but her title is District Autoriature Liaison, and for her dedication working on the translation. A lot of occasion, and Amber and I, we consulted multiple times during the day, trying to discuss how can we to make sure that accurate and proper translation for any, everything, survey question, because we know how important translation. And then one word can be interpreted different, for example, local. In our district, local can be city, but in this survey, really, local is our district. So that is why I, she spent a lot of time in the evening, so I appreciate for that. The payroll department will distribute paper, paycheck on December twenty-third and December thirties. Additional detailed information will be released to all the staff and waiting for the email. And I want to thank Physical Service Department and Veronica for make sure that employee are paid, or paid on time. And our staff know that how critical, people on the vacation, on holiday, but they, the payment should not be delayed. So, they know that there are certain time, special payroll staff, they cannot take time off. So, so I want to appreciate that every, every holiday is like this, and especially, we had a shortage of staff right now due to the medical leave, so the department staff, they just pitching. And this is also an opportunity for us to cross-train our staff. So I wish, I wish the board, the superintendent, everybody, and our Jerry and everybody here or not here, have a wonderful holidays.
Thank you, Connie. And with that, we're on to educational services. Dr. Stacy Ayers. Stacy, what do you have for us?
Good evening, board members. As you all know, our application for the dual-language immersion program is open, but only until Friday. It closes this Friday, so this is our final opportunity for families that have kindergarteners that will be ready for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So that's current TK or preschool that will be looking forward to kindergarten. You'll want to apply by Friday because that's when the application will close. Also currently running is our local climate survey. This is the survey that we do annually for our parents, our families, and our students to help inform our LCAP process. And so all of our students in grades fourth through twelfth grade should check their district email for the link to be able to participate in that survey. And all of our family members should receive an email through the email associated with their Ares Parent Portal to be able to participate. If for some reason, a student or a family member did not receive that link, you can check the school newsletters to be able to get a link to be able to participate because we hope that everyone takes that opportunity to give us some input. And then I just wanted to take the time to say thank you to all of our performing arts teachers and our elementary classroom teachers across the district for all of the very special holiday performances that started last week and are continuing this week and then on through next week. The creativity that they have shared with their students and the countless hours that all of them have put in to prepare for the students to sing and dance and just show off all of those wonderful skills really shows off the incredible talent of our students. And I know that sitting in the audience, it brought lots of joy to my heart, and I'm sure the families that have attended have also felt that sense of joy as well. So, happy holidays to all of our staff and to our board.
Great, thank you, Stacy. And then on to human resources, Richard Lohman. Richard?
I also want to echo, good evening, everybody. I want to echo what Stacy said about our backup program. Every winter season, I feel this, this, it's like almost awe about what our, our kids do and what our families do. So, thank you to our staff and our kids and our families who make all that happen. I also like to thank Denise on her election win, and I look forward to continuing to work with her. Denise and I have built a, a good relationship over the last year-ish, a little bit more than that. And I actually truly, truly, truly enjoy working with you, so congratulations. Elias, not so much, but Denise, for sure. And then. And I also want to wish everyone a happy holidays, a happy winter break. It is well-deserved. It is very timely at this point of year, so happy holidays, everybody.
Great, thank you, Richard. Now, we are over to board member comments, item twelve. We're going to start with Melissa Espinoza. Melissa?
All right, good evening, everybody. So since we last met, I'll just talk about some events that I attended. I attended the Teacher of the Year Lunch, which is always nice to recognize our employees, and it was a beautiful program. Thank you, H R. I know that was something you guys put together. Well done, and I was happy to be able to come to it. I went to the Temple City Schools Foundation Gala on eleven twenty-one, and I really liked that approach. I think if, if, even if we could make it bigger so we could get more people to enjoy it, that would be so great. But it was, it was really nicely done, a dinner and a show. I mean, you can't ask for more than that, so I hope they did well because the Temple City Schools Foundation really supports all of our schools, and we appreciate everything that they do. I also attended the Founder's Day Committee Meeting, and just so everybody knows, Founder's Day is scheduled for February thirteenth at the snack bar area at the high school field, and it's going to be at five thirty. It's kind of, the setup will be similar to what we did for the, the state of the schools, yeah. So we're looking forward to that. I, I'm on the committee to just help plan, and that committee is hard at work already, so kudos to them. I also attended the Orchestra Strings Holiday Concert on December second. And it was beautiful. I, I love hearing strings during the holidays. I, I would say this, though. They also, the orchestra played last night, and the sound quality is so different in a gym versus on a stage. So, you know, come on, Performing Arts Center, let's go. Twelve, three, I attended the Temple City Council PTA Association Meeting in Potluck. They're planning many things. One being a committee to study whether they would support our, like advocate for our bond program. So they'll, it's a six-month study that they are working on, and they, they got a lot of volunteers to be part of this committee, so that was very good. And then, let's see, where did I go? Oh, yeah. So then Breakfast with Santa on December fifth at Emperor. Emperor has that down to a science. It was so well-organized, beautifully done, and they have such a huge turnout. I think they said they had, like they were expecting almost like a thousand meals that morning. So, it's huge, and they do a wonderful job, so thank you, Emperor PTA, for all your work. And then obviously, I attended the December ninth, yesterday's holiday concert. I mean, all of our performing arts instructors, their hard work, I mean, it showed all on the stage. Those students were well-prepared. They were having fun. The elementary Vapa, great job, loved it. And so, just, it just, I, I got there after a stressful workday, but I left there in the holiday spirit, so that was great. Congratulations to the girls' tennis team for winning their C I F championship intermediate design and fabrication class. I saw that they won, they took fifth place in a J P L invention challenge, so congratulations to them. And then Pride of Temple City, I think in November they won a competition, or no, sorry, they came in sixth in a competition, so congratulations to them. And with that, I will just say, you know, I'm wishing our entire school community a wonderful holiday season. Please rest up, enjoy your family and your friends and your loved ones, and, you know, enjoy the season. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mary Snead.
Thank you, Board President Smith. I want to thank Vincent also for his leadership. You, you did a great job. You just kept some, our enthusiasm up all year. You're just, you're just this bundle of energy that just brings a smile to everybody's face, so thank you, thank you for your leadership. Since our last meet, we didn't have, we only had one meeting last month, but there were a lot of things happening. I did attend several events. We celebrated our Kiwanis Student of the Month, and I was able to also attend the District Employees of the Year Luncheon. That was really lovely. Congratulations to our high school tennis, our girls' tennis team. They're just, our students are so accomplished, and I really, I congratulate them for reaching, being our C I F winner, winning team. I want to thank our, the Learning Center for their presentation tonight. I, I'm just so proud of each of those students who got up, and Jessica has just done, she and her staff just do such a phenomenal job of meeting students' educational needs where it needs to be met and helping them be successful. And I'm, I was especially proud of the, the student who is, who has found his track on how to graduate early. When he was speaking, I just thought, what a proud moment for him. But I want, I want to thank them for presenting tonight. Over the last few weeks, our, we kicked off the holidays with lots of chance to see our performing arts students just really shine. The Schools Foundation Gala was a fun, fun evening. Matt was extremely lucky that evening. Went home with a, this beautiful cake, went home with a giant basket of, I'm not sure if your grandchildren are going, let you go anywhere near it, but.
It's my wife.
Your wife. It was just a really fun night. I also attended the high school holiday strings concert. And then Cloverly presented their first musical. It was absolutely, both those evenings were just so, so enjoyable. Last night, we enjoyed the high school holiday show, and I was sitting in a box behind a family who had a third grader from La Rosa in our junior chorus. And they kept trying to get her attention from, from that distance. It was a little difficult, but as we were, as I was watching our youngest students perform, they were having so much fun. I was just so proud of our Vapa program. And how, and just how fortunate we are to have such outstanding teachers who have, they've expanded the programs, that program under, just on their own, they've decided, let's expand this. And I was just so proud of the, that we have the Vapa program in our district. And I, I appreciate all the teachers and all the staff who put together just a really enjoyable evening last night. I, we thoroughly enjoyed the show, and I know everybody in that audience did. I know there's a lot of upcoming concerts coming up, and I'm looking forward to those. And if you're looking for some great holiday entertainment, just look on the school website. You'll probably find some great, great entertainment to come at all of our schools. And lastly, I also want to wish everyone a great holiday. And I just feel very blessed to be a part of such a great district and a great board. So, enjoy the rest of this year and into our next year, so thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next up is Donna Georgina. Donna?
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I attended the Camellia Festival Play Day, and I'm happy to announce that there are four children from La Rosa, four children from Emperor, and one from Longdon that'll be serving on the Royal Court this year. I also participated in the Kiwanis Student of the Month program, always enjoyable. I attended the Employees of the Year Luncheon that was put on by Human Resources. It was a very nice event. Thank you so much. It's just great to be able to honor our staff for their achievements, so I appreciate that. I have to agree with Member Espinoza that Temple City Schools Foundation Gala, I really enjoyed that. I thought it was a lot of fun. It was just, I don't know, different way of watching a musical production, and the production was great. The food was great, the atmosphere was great. I, I just really enjoyed it. I hope they do it again. This last week, I attended the School Board Association Annual Education Conference. I attended many sessions, a couple that were noteworthy. I attended one on the Brown Act, and there are some new changes coming to the Brown Act. And one of the things they discussed that I thought I'd just throw out here, especially for Matt, they said that they recommend that when you have a lot of people that want to speak on a subject and you have a time limit, instead of, for instance, we have a twenty-minute time limit, instead of cutting it off at seven people to reduce the amount of time that you give each person and allow more people to speak. So, instead of seven people speaking, maybe you can cut it down to one minute, and then twenty people can speak. But they suggest whatever you do, that there's consistency. You don't do that for one topic and not for another because then people feel like they're not being treated fairly. So, it's something to think about for the future. We don't have that happen very often, so. I also attended a program on school bonds, which was, it was kind of technical, but it was interesting because some things have changed since the last time we had a school bond in twenty twelve. So that, that was kind of interesting for me. And I was able to change my flight and get home in time to go to Lights on Temple City, which I'm so glad I did because I especially love the band. They, our band, they dress up, they all have their uniforms on, but then they have like hats and lights all over them, and they're playing Christmas music, and they're just a joy to watch. So that was really fun. I'm glad I made it home in time to do that. I attended a sponsor recognition put on by Heliotec at Longo Toyota. They had a, a couple of speakers, businesses that spoke, Longo Toyota and Berge. And it was really interesting because they loved the program, and so that's a really good thing. for our Heliotek kids. And they were talking about what their plans are for next year. Next year's a road race, so it's gonna be really exciting. I also attended the Women's Club Centennial Celebration and our Brighter Side Singers performed. Always, again, a joy to watch them, especially their Christmas performance. And they're all dressed up in their Christmas outfits and they just are so entertaining and have so much Christmas spirit. Last night I attended the holiday concert, which, yeah, it was awesome. But I really, that was, the cuteness meter just went like off the charts. Those younger kids were just so adorable. I really enjoyed it. It really is adding another dimension to the whole holiday concert that I think people really enjoy. I want to congratulate the girls tennis team. I think, uh, girl sports have a special place in my heart because when I went to Temple City High School, there was hardly any girl sports. And I think I really would have loved that, to been able to participate. So I guess I'm like reliving it through them. So I'm really happy for them and congratulations. As the parade chair for the Camellia Festival, I have invited them to ride in the parade this year so that we can, the whole community can recognize them and we can honor them for their achievement. Congratulations also to the intermediate design and fabrication class for placing fifth at the JPL Invention Challenge Finals. And then I wanted to announce that the Historical Society of Temple City is having a general meeting on Sunday, January 11th at 2:00 PM. And the program is going to be about the history of the pride of Temple City. So Bert Ferntial is going to be the speaker. There are going to be past band directors there, Gary Urick is going to be there and possibly Emmett Hulahan. And John Howie and Matt Byers are putting together the presentation for it. And so I'm sure it's gonna be great. And I want to invite everyone who would like to attend to come to that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thanks Donna. With that, we're gonna move on to Vincent. Bill, Vincent?
All right, all right. Good evening, everyone. I echo the comments of my fellow board members. Would like to congratulate our amazing Temple City High School girls tennis team for their incredible achievement. We know that this didn't happen overnight for them and tremendous amount of work from both the students and the coaches. So great credit to them. And to Principal Gould, you know, I've known her for a long time. And this is her element. This is what she does the best. She finds a way to bring the best out of people. She finds these opportunities for them to excel and shine. And it's clearly a presentation tonight that's exactly what she shared with us along with the incredible students that are there. So I'm incredibly thankful for that. I was also able to attend our CSBA School Board Conference. Some really interesting breakout sessions, general sessions with our gubernatorial candidates regarding the state of schools and what their thoughts are for the election cycle next year. And, you know, I think we all understand that AI is a hot topic button for pretty much all school districts up and down, well, the whole country. And, and it's, it's, it's good to see. Districts are all working together, trying different avenues, different angles to try and somehow implement these tools and understand how to basically develop guardrails, et cetera. So it, it'll be a, a interesting progress as we see it year to year. And I'm pretty sure we will have our own, you know, input in that as well. And yeah, I, you know, I actually came home early on Friday to go to Lights on Temple City and then work had different plans. So, so I feel bad for that, but you know, hopefully next year. And, and on that Saturday, Heliotek had their sponsor event. And, you know, this is all part of that learning structure for them. They've never done a sponsor event like this before and it's, it's a great educational piece. Allows them to construct this whole entire process and see what it's like. You know, learn from all the things that, that, that they presented. They get to reflect back on it and, and continue to develop their project and their group and really identity-wise as a company. So I'm, I'm, I'm really, really happy for them. The holiday concert, I mean, I was sitting next, well, so there's a story here with this. I was sitting in between both Dr. Ayers and Mr. Loman. And as a matter of fact, I was thinking right, right when the elementary kids were performing, which, you know, my focus was, you know, there and nowhere else. But then it came to mind that, what am I gonna wear tonight? You know, th- these are one of those events that you, 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 you should, you should come nice. And, you know, I'm, uh, and Mr. Loman pointed out, hey, doesn't that, the choir with the black shirt and the green tie? And I said, oh, thank you. Good suggestion. So, so here we are. This is why I'm dressed like this. I hide nothing. So, um, uh, no, just again, uh, you know, you look at the elementary kids, right? And the level of performance that they had, where are they gonna be at high school? It's just, I can't even consider, it's just, it's gonna be, it's gonna be amazing. And, you know, it doesn't happen without all the staff, you know, Lacy Gilbert, Tammy. There's a whole group back there and, and, and the kids are very lucky. And we're very lucky to have these kids as well, to have the kind of family support to be able to produce these kind of programs. So we look forward to seeing more of this in the years ahead. And it's a busy time. This Saturday, our Science Olympia team's gonna be doing their first in-person competition. They've done a couple of virtual ones, if you want to call it that, called satellite tournaments. They're national level tournaments. And, you know, I gotta say, they're pretty good. On one of their first ones, they competed against 309 schools. They came in fourth. They get ahead, got ahead of all the New York schools. You know what I'm talking about? And on the second one, in their big tournament, 143 schools, and they finished first. So, um, you know, they, uh, they continue to amaze me and they work so hard. I don't know many high school kids that would raise their hand and say, Saturday night, let's study. That's just not, you know, a common thing. So I, I, I have to give them a tremendous amount of credit for that. And finally, you know, I have to, you know, I have this incredible sense of gratitude for my time this past year as president and this incredible group that we're with today and to all of you out there as well. You made my life so easy and, you know, I appreciate the, uh, the latitude that you've given me with some of the, you know, little oopsies that I had along the way. And, you know, I had just incredible support from everyone. And it's an incredibly memorable time. As Dr. Kuna said, this is my second time go around and a lot better this time around. So, a lot less stressful. So, and I feel, I felt like I was a lot more in my element and I was able to really kind of take in and enjoy every part of this throughout the year. And to celebrate the students, all of you, uh, through all the different events and the different adventures that we've all had together. And I can't thank all of you enough. Uh, I look forward to many more years of this. So thank you so much. And that's it for me this evening.
Great, thanks Vincent. And so it's my turn. I don't have anything, I think, to add. There have been so many things though that have gone on in the last month or plus since we had our last meeting. Really, and so I really just, to take a, a look at our district from a higher level, there are so many great things and, and opportunities for our kids. I'm so thrilled to see what's going on here. Item after item after item, from VAPA to Helio to everything. And so I think we have much to offer and I'm looking forward to being a part of that as long as I can. Congratulations to everybody who's participated in these things, the tennis situation. You know, we saw it tonight. We saw what Jessica had to share with the Alternative Learning Center back behind us. There's just great stuff going on everywhere. So thank you all who do that kind of stuff for us and help us move along in such a great manner. Anyway, so that's it. With that, we're gonna move on to student board member comments. Xavier, what do you have for us tonight?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to first off start by congratulating girls tennis. They worked so hard this season and I know this award is so well-deserved. And I also know, also if you haven't bought any of your holiday gifts, don't worry because our second annual student-run holiday boutique will be happening this Friday at Temple City High School. And it will be during school and as well as after school till 4:30. So you can stop by all of our student-run vendors there. We have so many different vendors, including our culinary programs. So that's very exciting to see. And then, um, in January, we have our dance concert for also our VAPA groups. And that will be January 16th at 6:00 PM, I believe. And it's $17 for the general ticket, 20 to 26 for reserved and 33 for box. So tickets are on sale right now, so make sure to buy your tickets before we sell out. And while it hasn't officially happened yet, I do want to wish everyone a very wonderful winter break. I know it's so very well-deserved and if you are taking any finals over this next two weeks, or next week, I would just want to wish you the best of luck, especially if you have any easier period finals. Thank you. That's all for me.
Great, thanks Xavier. Now we're on to the superintendent comments. Dr. Art Kuna, Art, what do you have for us?
Thank you. You know, I, I love hearing that we're taking finals and that kids actually get to have a winter break. I know it was, it was hard to get to that point, but I think it is really well-deserved for, for students to be able to, to relax over winter break and have that time. You know, we all know that when we come back, it tends to go rather quickly. You know, before you know it, we'll be sitting in May and, and looking at graduations and everything else. And so I, I hope that everybody has, you know, a nice holiday and, and finds a time to relax and just kind of gear up for the second half of the school year. Thank you, Member Espinosa, for sharing about PTA. I actually will connect PTA with our Team Civics who you guys approved a couple of meetings ago because they actually can help them with the process of getting the approval through the district. They've done that through, or for other districts that they've supported as well. So I think they, they feel like they, they can give a lot of support and, and make it a quicker and easier process than, than maybe some of the members feel like it will be. So we'll make sure to connect them. You know, a little over a year and a half ago, we, we brought to you the idea of, of this, this elementary VAPA program. And really with the intent that it would be a pipeline for our secondary programs. And man, it's, it's working. Like there were over 200 kids on that stage yesterday and they were doing phenomenal. Like they sounded so good. And I just happened to be in the box with the high school administrated, administration. And when the young lady who had the solo performed, you know, Elena's like, you guys write her name down. Because they, they wanted to make sure that they had her on their radar for when she hits the high school. And she's only in, she's a Cloverly and I think she's a sixth grader, but it's just, you know, that was the intent and it's really nice to see that it is working. So I'm, I, you know, I really do feel like that our, our secondary program in the, in the performing arts is gonna be in good shape. My, I, you know, I always worry if we're gonna have too many kids and not enough space. But we'll see, you know, I, I mean, that's a, that's a good, we're working on it. Okay, all right, good. But that is a good problem to have. And so, you know, I thank you guys for, for putting your trust in, in us and, and kind of the program that we, we wanted to develop. And, and hopefully you all see it too, but it, it really is a fabulous program. I want to thank our community for the, uh, the support that they've given with regards to the bond survey that has gone out. You know, we have, we had a preliminary call with True North, Connie and I, the other day, and they've received a good number of responses where they feel comfortable being able to give us information going forward. And so, like Connie said, it's still open and, and I, and I hope people still continue to give their responses. But, you know, I, I know it's not always easy to give up, you know, a, a, 10, 15 minutes of your time to respond to some of these things and, but I appreciate people taking the time to do so because they're, the voices are important for us to hear. CSBA, I, I agree with Member Bell and, and, and that it was interesting to be able to go to an event this year where they had candidates for the governor's race. And, you know, there were a lot of promises made. And we all know that the likelihood of them being able to carry through with some of those is, is probably not great. It was nice to hear that education is on the mind of the candidates that were there. But hopefully we can hold them accountable, you know, to delivering on some of the promises that they made. And I will say that I, I appreciate CSBA's advocacy with wanting to hold the state accountable. And in, in the sense that they don't always provide the support. They're quick to point a finger, but they don't always do their part to support education. And so I really do appreciate CSBA looking to hold them accountable. You know, I, I was having conversations with, with folks at some of the meetings that I was at in, in the sense that, you know, very few people are tasked with presenting a budget without knowing what their budget is going to be. And we do this year in and year out. We present a budget to you guys in June and then we get the governor's budget in July or, or at the end of, very end of June. And so, so much of it changes and we don't have the ability to then pivot like private industry can. So a lot of this is backwards to me and I don't understand why people haven't really taken a look at that. But, you know, when they have conversations about, you know, what is it gonna look like going forward? And what is some of the red tape? And how can we support you? I think these are some of the things that are important for us to share. And I think, you know, the other thing there, that there were some frank conversations about even the state superintendent. You know, what is the role of the state superintendent of public instruction? And, and is there any authority or power in there? And what is the cost of having a state superintendent if there is no true authority there? Or support for, you know, our schools? And so I think, you know, this is probably a time, you know, with, with a new governor coming in, maybe there will be some things that will be looked at, hopefully. Because I don't think we can keep doing the same thing we've been doing. Because things are getting tighter and tighter. And so, uh, you know, hopefully, hopefully there were some people who heard. And then on a, a more positive note, I also went to the, the Women's Club 100-year celebration dinner and I was asked to be the honorary grand marshal for the Camellia Festival. And I thought it was such an honor. I, like, I, I truly appreciated them asking me to, to be part of something that has been part of this community for so long. And so I, I gladly accepted that honor and, and I look forward to it. But I just, I don't know if there is a protocol and they, they need to announce, but I just wanted to share with you guys that I was asked and I, I accepted. So, um, and that's it for me. Congratulations.
Great, thanks Art. Okay, with that, we are moving on to our discussion action agenda, starting first with administration and item 16.
Written communication.
No, we don't. Written comments, no. Thanks, keep me honest. Okay. So, item 16, received board policy for second reading and approved. BP 5116.1, intra-district open enrollment. I have a motion to approve in the second, please.
So move?
I'll second.
Motion from Vincent Bell and second from Donna Giorgino. Any comments or questions about this? This is approval. Okay, I'll go ahead and call for the vote, starting first with student, Board Member Xavier Munoz.
Yes.
Yes? And then for the rest, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, and any nays? No, so the motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Uh, we are on, moving on to item seventeen, which, uh, to receive board policies for first reading and as follows. Be, a board policy, BP fifty-one forty-six, married slash pregnant slash parenting students. Uh, item BP sixty-one fifty-nine, individualized education program. And item BP sixty-one fifty-nine point-two, non-public, non-sectarian school and agency services for special education. So may I have a motion to receive these for first reading, please?
I'll move.
Motion from Member Espinoza and a second from?
I'll second.
Member Gi- Georgino, are there any comments or questions about these? No, and I will go ahead and call for the vote, starting first with, uh, preferential vote for student Munoz.
Yes.
Yes? Okay. And then for the rest of us, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any nays? No? Okay, so the motion passes five-zero. Moving now on to the area of business services, item eighteen, uh, calls for approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six first interim financial report. I know Connie's been working hard at this and has a lot of great information. He's gonna give to us in a short amount of time.
I was thinking about whether, um, I will try to change the theme of the presentation. If the presentation theme is colorful, which means the message is good. If nothing happen, which mean that message probably just not that good. So, good evening, everybody. Um, this is a routine. Um, at this, um, year of time, uh, edicoder requires us to present the first interim report. And the, the reporter, uh, must be, uh, go to the, um, Lego. So this is the couple area, um, I will cover, uh, during the course of the presentation. And this is deadline and they are, most of us, uh, here are familiar, but for those people, maybe not, not, I'm not picking on you just for your information. And, uh, as a routine, we really have to make sure that we all know that deadline. The, uh, reporter go to the, uh, county and then later on county will, uh, review, review it. So, um, this is our budget cycle and there, um, I realize that edicoder have a lot of, uh, reporting requirement, um, compared with the city. And we have, we are here for the first interim report, which is December fifteenth. And then in January, um, some of us will go to the, uh, governor's, um, budget release workshop. Uh, that is going to start in the next cycle of the report, which is provided guideline for our second interim report, which is, uh, due March, uh, fifteenth. Then, um, Stacy and I were gonna be very busy, uh, doing the L cap and the budget. And then, um, governor is going to be release another one and then adoption in June. The public hearing, the L cap, the budget and their adoption, the end of the, uh, June board meeting. So I was talked to the county, uh, last Friday and then Connie asked me why I'm so late to leave the building. I told them I'm preparing a report and I asked them, do you have a report? They say, oh, we only have one report. I guess the city will not have first interim, second interim report, just us. So, um, how we prepare our report? Are we just, um, guess the number, grab the something and how we do our, um, do our work? So this is a guideline we, uh, received. And then, uh, this year, because Lego has a new CFO, so, um, they gave us two guidelines for the first interim report. But this of some information may be, um, good for the public. I'm pretty sure Dr. Kuna is very familiar with. Lego actually have seventy-nine public school district, including unified school district and elementary school, seventy-nine. And then, as well as nine R O P, regional, um, occupational programs. So that is good. Not a lot of people know, knowing that, uh, we're probably, we are probably one of the biggest county, um, in, in the state regarding of the office education. So for the L C F, um, F calculation, this is our ninety between different year, about ninety-six percent of the revenue we receive. Um, two years ago, the Lego element is on Excel sheet, how we calculated the, uh, L C F F revenue as well as how they review our revenue, basically is the, um, F I C M A C. F I C M A C, uh, release, uh, their, uh, L C F calculator. So they starting the different type of the Excel sheet and then we're gonna do the, our own, um, calculations. So that is how L C F, uh, revenue generate, including Stacy's supplement, uh, um, dollars. So, uh, this is a one year. I, I think the plantation is not that went, um, big size. So we have, um, this is the two, uh, one-time funding. Uh, the first one I, um, announced to share with the board during my update. This is second one. Second one is a student support and professional development. Our district allocation is one point six million dollar. Uh, we have received one point two million dollar and then the, the balance will be, uh, received in February. And we all know that the Fed, uh, cut the interest rate back to October and today is another one. So which mean is our local revenue from interest income portion, uh, will, will be reduced because of the, uh, uh, rate cut. So next guideline, what, we're not only, uh, where Dr. Kuna will look at, and I will look at the, the district financial situation. And we go to different, um, uh, the conference statewide. We're not look at only the, what the Lego said. We may not necessarily agreeing with the, the guideline. So we look at the different, uh, vehicles. So what is the most financial situation in, uh, in California? And as, uh, uh, the, uh, the, um, United States and the nation. So, uh, this year, there's three report related to K two to our, released by L A O, Legislative Analyst Office. So in additional traditional tool, they also released, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six K, um, position ninety-eight and K two to our education. The each reporter, um, adjust a certain different angle. So we need to look at, um, as a whole. The twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is for the next year, the California fiscal outlook is the two, I think it's a way all need to pay attention for the long term because, uh, we are interested in our district long-term financial stability. This is that California are facing nearly eighteen billion dollar with B, budget deficit in twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then that deficit is gonna be increased up to thirty-five billion dollar annually by twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Those are our three-year multi-year projection we're gonna submit to the, to the state. And in addition, why suddenly the deficit? Because, uh, we talk about this California structural deficit. How our state revenue rely on, rely on the stock market? When the, the high-income, um, owner, the one percent of high-income, um, California who own a high income, we have to rely on them. When stock market go down, the income is, uh, capital gain is go down, then state revenue collections go down. So that is we call the structured, um, deficit. So the, uh, area, the, um, fiscal outlook for the school, community, they project that twenty-six, twenty-seven, the core actually is stat- stat- statutory core is two point five one percent. They also released a one-time funding, the one-time funding we, uh, I already reported to the board of what our allocation. And they recommend that the district use one-time money, especially for the student supporter and the professional development. Use of one-time, one-time money to build on long-term resilience for our district. So the student's support and the professional development, that funding, the deadline to spending is the end of twenty-twenty-nine. So the, um, professional, the expenditure basically said that, um, the twenty-five, twenty-six, the state funding us, there's three tests. I don't wanna go to do detail because so technically I will confuse everybody before, um, I finish. This year, we have funded at the tax one, tax one, which mean that the, the, um, the guarantee, position ninety-eight guarantee, we, the school and the community college, we receive forty percent of the general fund from state. So that is where in, um, test one. And, and also they talk about the, um, additional funding, which will be impact us in a positive way is the universal kindergarten. The twenty-five, twenty-six, first year, the state fully implement, uh, implemented the universal kindergarten. So because of requirement, which, um, Richard already, uh, finished that test because of ratio. The student teacher ratio is drop, drop to ten to one. Because of requirement, then they give us additional funding, which is including the first interim report. The other one is the, um, UCLA Anderson, uh, Management School. They release, they are also, um, releasing their forecast. Uh, although their report looks like not that fancy, but their report result is, uh, well respected. Basically, the uncertainty is a word they, um, release. Why is uncertain? They didn't, um, they did not budget the, the recession, uh, in early twenty-twenty-six for calendar year. But they do said that the economy will be slow and it will be bounce back in the end of twenty-twenty-six. Um, as, um, Ms. Bell mentioned at A R, they did say that the California is very strong in the technology, the A R. But in the other sector, we all know the leisure and hospitality area and the public finance service and also construction is kind of slow. So that is the, the, the challenge. That is the reason why the uncertainty with the inflation, the, the tariffs changes and with the government shutdown, which is delayed certain data released to the, to the public. So what is, uh, our financial position? The first interim, which is we projected the actual revenue cost district occur from July first to October first. Then we projected rest, rest of school year compared with the budget as Doc-, um, Dr. Kuna mentioned that when you do the budget, basically still not, state have not finalized the budget. But edicoder requires the board to adopt our next year budget. So there will be some changes. So the changes is a, is a, is a core. The two point three percent core for the twenty-five, twenty-six were, were still the same. But the core for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight has been reduced from three point four one, which we projected, we're including our, uh, adult budget will be reduced in the first interim to three point oh eight percent. This is not including the L O A, they projected statutory core for the twenty-six, twenty-seven is two point five one. So what we budget right now is three point oh two. If in January, the governor said, no, the twenty-six, twenty-seven, the core actually it is two point five one, then in second interim, we're gonna adjust on our revenue. So the enrollment, I will put, uh, I will explain detail in the later. I have a specific slide. This exactly I mentioned to the board that because of the full implementation for TK, the state, uh, did, uh, give us additional for, funding for per ADA and because of a requ- requirement. So this is also incorporated in our first interim report. And then on carryover, we have a finalizer number after we close book. So it, uh, already included in the first interim report. This is also the new and I think a lot of people in this business, this is, uh, automatically, we're all enjoying our almost finish, the high school sports complex. But we also need to be mindful the additional cost. The property, uh, we ha- we have to report once the project finish, the property tax liability, the, um, cost will be increased. And of course, the, some utility will, will be because of, uh, lightning. So, the conclusion is, uh, we did self-support positive certification, which is Temple City Unified School District showed the county that we, as a district, we were able to, I mean, um, fi- fi- finish our work, financial obligation for the twenty-five, twenty-six until to twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Under the condition for the budget assumption is state gave us as right now. So this is the, uh, enrollment chart and there is first interim and the, the adult budget. So, uh, starting eighteen, nineteen, this is all extra. And then we, um, this is the year October I joined the district. And the next year we have enrollment have, uh, 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 decreased. But the twenty-three, twenty, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, we are glad that the enrollment are also increase e- um, each year. And, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five also. So this year, um, we did see the, um, impact for change of in- immigration law. So, um, at our census day, which is the first Wednesday of October, compare with, uh, the last year's official census day, which is five thousand two hundred ninety-eight. We are, we are, um, uh, last, we have ten few students. Official data is five thousand two hundred eighty, eighty-eight. And when time continue, um, we are experience continue decline the students. Hopefully, when the January, when second semester coming and we will bump up. Because our district have historically, when school goes by, our enrollment is increased. And use a last example, when we, at the end of school year, our enrollment actually is five thousand three hundred twenty-six. So we hopefully in January, we have more kids, uh, show up. So, uh, conservatively, as our, always our approach, uh, when we adjust this year's, uh, enrollment, even if the, uh, students, um, is ten students less, the, it is still higher we, when we projected, because we put, um, project conservative, um, decline fifty kids. So in reality, we actually, uh, official, um, census day is only reduce, uh, ten kids. But we, the future, uh, enrollment projection, we will use, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, official, um, uh, numbers to project. This is assumption we used and, um, we talk about a core. So, uh, next year, we do the three, uh, three point two, um, oh-two and the year after is three point oh-eight. So this is actually is the co- uh, most conservative approach. We have two different data. The F I C M A C tells us the information is three point oh-two and then the, the later is three point, um, four-two. Lego gave us information twenty-six, twenty-seven, three point oh-eight and the twenty-seven, twenty-eight is three point oh-eight. So I called Lego, say, what do you want me to do? Because you guys di- direct us use a F I C M A C, um, calculation. But your, um, projection, your, uh, the information for, which is the L C F F core is different. So their answer is use the most conservative one. So that, that's what we are doing. Use the most conservative one. Okay? So the other, um, uh, the other information has not be changed that much. And there, um, except the many block grant and there, um, there's a little bit of, um, adjustment for the, uh, dollar amount uh, as well as the, um, lottery. Lottery just like one dollar less. But, uh, our higher, um, attendance, um, uh, rate is cap- capture. And actually, we end up have a, a three thousand dollar more revenue compared with the, um, budget. This is going to, this is the projection, uh, we projected by end of year, what is our general fund looks like? The unrestricted restrict and there, um, of course, um, we, we are deficit spending. So we projected the, the four, um, four point, um, two million dollar deficit. But I, I want to, uh, share with the board that this not necessarily mean that when we close book for twenty-five, twenty-six, we're gonna really have a negative four point two million dollar. Our job is make sure that when we do the budget, we projected every, um, every possible scenario can impact our book. We budget enough legal counsel cost. Are we gonna have all spend them? No. We have been, um, closed monitor, uh, legal fee. And, and we, we know they maybe have some, um, flexibility. And we added the utility cost and is the utility cost is enough or less? So, so there's, uh, there's also, uh, some, um, flexibility. So, and for the restrict, uh, we are deficit spending. It's not because we spend more than grant authorized, it's because carryover. It's because of one-time money. We did not spend, uh, the money last year, the carryover coming here. And then, of course, you don't have a money, but expenditure. So the, the, so deficit spending, we need to look at a more, more detail, not just the number itself. This is a, a revenue comparison, um, compared with first interim versus adult budget. For the L C F F, um, we For the LCFF, we, we have increased LCFF because additional funding the state gave us. And their federal revenue, we, we also have a higher after we do the carryovers. And state, as well as state revenue, state revenue, when we including two one time funding, the two one time funding itself is almost close to million dollars. So that's why it's higher. And the other local revenue is a little bit lower and it's very interesting that Selba, Selba adjusts its budget and give us less allocation. So we need to take a lo- look at to make sure that the adjustment is accurate. So overall, the total revenue were a little bit higher and compare with the adult budget, including all the carryover, so, and also the one time money and also the, the additional TK funding from state. This is our part chart for the expenditure for the, um, combined, let me combine the general fund. And there, our majority, of course, the majority budget is for our staff benefit and, and the salary. And we also have our operation books and their capital outlay, it's, it's, it's minor. And transfer to mainly for the special end and there we are required for the three percent routine maintenance transfer as we receive the district, the state funding. This is a multi-year projection. Um, we, we projected the deficit spending, but the way the deficit spending is reduced. And, and we will continue update our multi-projection once the state changes this, the assumption, including cola, including all the program funding. This is like the commitment, this also the next border agenda, Gatsby fifty four. This is a routine agenda. We are required to, the board to adopt the resolution. And basically, how our any fund balance specifically, the each section, how we command the dollar amount. We revise some of the section is because we have actual number. For example, the company absence is which mean that the district responsible for all the classified employee, they are earned but unspent, earned but unused vacation. So this is the actual dollar amount as end of June thirty is twenty twenty five. The bargaining unit dollar amount is actually is the, the data. We were updated once we starting the, um, Jan- January twenty twenty, twenty six, the new open enrollment. The textbook adoption, classroom devices facility, we adjusted the commitment. Here's the reason why. Now we, with the DR program, every each year, when the classes are promoted next one, we need a new textbook. So that's additional funding we set aside. The classroom, the students device, we also including not only still device. Last board meeting, we presented our plan for the secret camera. So while we actively seeking for the grant, before we receive the grant, we will set money aside in case we do need to install certain new camera device. So the, the, the facility also are including because when we finish our high school project, all our capital outlay fund, twenty one fund of, fund is bound, will be spent. I would go to the detail next slide. So which mean is that we need to make sure we set aside funding for our facility just in case. Because of the inflation, one million dollar project right now, you cannot really see that much. Because years ago, before pandemic, one million dollar is a big project. Right now, one million dollar is no longer a big project because of cost of labor, cost of material. And we also make sure that we have money set aside for the vehicle replacement, also including furniture. We may not pay attention for the furniture, but we, if the furniture is, is getting old and we do need a repair, replace it, it's also for the safety. This not only for the classroom furniture, maybe the staff furniture also. So this is the, the detailed information we updated. This is the backup information for our next agenda for the resolution. This is the other fund, fund balance. And there, I want to highlight certain of the fund, adult education. The fa- the adult education have a state program and a federal program. The federal program cut us sixty two thousand dollars. Our funding from federal from last year's eighty seven thousand dollars to this year's twenty five thousand dollars. That is a lot. That is almost a one positions. So because of that, we projected the deficit spending and there Jessica has been very supportive and she is aware of challenges she are facing. She's already adjusted her operation and Stacy and I just need to continue support her. We close need to monitor the, the budget. And child development is very healthy. Mickey's program, after, before our school program is very healthy. And you will see cafeteria have negative one point eight million dollar. This is because we plan to install the HVAC at all the elementary school side. So that, that is cost including the device, the equipment as well as the architecture service fee. Oh, sorry, it moved. Okay, so the, the other things is facility, we are going to twenty one, we issue a bond to a million dollar. We're going to spend all. The developer fee program, which is twenty five, this is another agenda I was presenting today. This year, although overall, our students' population is, is less, fewer, but our secondary school is very strong. Both our Oak and High School have more students enrolled. Our High School as of right now still is hit the eighteen hundred mark. So this will allow us to use the funded twenty five with developer fee to support, continue to support our, our program. Because the developer fee, you need to tide with the grow population. So that's a good opportunity we, we spend this money. And also we funded forty, we're going to also, also will spend four million dollar. And we will, this number maybe changes depend on how the program goes and additional inspection needed by DSA. And yeah, so on the other enterprise, as I mentioned in the adult budget, we will no longer support two hundred thousand dollar. And the program is very healthy, any fund balance, it will cover their temporary deficit. So what is our challenge? Touch base a little, little bit. Inflation, okay, everything is increased. And there, for example, if, even if Anthony is here, he know that after pandemic, if we hire a contractor to repair cer- certain area of facility because we're either, we don't have equipment or we don't have a staff or don't have expertise, the contractor starting charge as truck loading fee. Truck loading fee, that is additional cost, costs happen after pandemic in addition to the increase of their labor, labor fee. So that's inflation across, impact each everywhere. And then the utility is going to continue cost and our special add. Our special add just like all the district, all the district because of requirement and because of whatever various requirement, state, federal, where we're going to. And this is interesting things I want to share with the board. And this article is old, but it still work. It say that is NBC Bay Area said California Public Schools see sharp decline enrollment. So, so most of school, schools should see the declining enrollment. There's other things is very interesting this year. It's interesting, but in a positive way. So this year, we, we did the alternative income survey, two simple question when we do the registration. And there surprisingly that the data has a huge difference compared with our normal mail application. So which mean that we have a more family submitted data compared with the mail application. And the one things I can think about is it take a longer time to do the mail application. We also take to verification. The other form probably just easy as a part of the enrollment package. So there's some work we need to do. And there, by reconciling this two form, we hope that we can capture those family who may not aware that they need to fill the mail application, who may do not get a chance submit the mail application. So we're going to remind those family, they are still need to submit information because more information they share with us. If we have a higher free reduced meal, then it will benefit for the kids because the, the state will, a lot of program, especially category program. Stacy oversight, they, their phone is dependent percentage. So there's some little bit of work we need to follow up. So what is the next step? So we, this Friday, we're going to submit the report to this, to the Lego. Lego do review and we'll send a board after their review. And we have a couple of work, work to do. And then the audit, twenty four, twenty five auditor is finished. The audit had released the draft. So we're going to submit also on fifteen for twenty four, twenty five. And then in January, we all know the governor will be release a budget and then we probably will go attend as usual, go to School Service California. And then any changes, we will go to as a second interim developer process, we're going to make adjustment. And then again, we're going to start into the staffing and the position because it's so crucial, as board can tell, majority of a budget is, is a staffing. So we make sure that our staff is, staff positions very, very tight to meet our need. So next time I will be here is will be present to the second interim report. So any question from the board?
I don't see any.
Yeah.
Matt, can I add something?
Sure.
Just because I think it's important for people to hear. So Connie talked a little bit about the, the decreases in cola. And I don't know about you, but as I sit here listening to it, it, it seems very strange that the state can tell us in twenty seven, twenty eight, the cola is going to drop by point three, four percent. But in twenty six, twenty seven, we're not making any adjustment to cola right now. And we do this game year after year. And so they're going to take away point three, four percent in the second out year. Then after we present first interim, they're going to come back at the governor's budget proposal and we're going to drop twenty six, twenty seven cola by point five percent. So now we've lost point eight, four percent in our cola, which is almost a full percent. But they're going to market it as they only took away a half a percent because nobody's paying attention to the twenty seven, twenty eight number. And two years ago, and I could be wrong, but I'll, I'll double check it. I think the twenty six, twenty seven cola was originally three point five, four percent. And it was adjusted the same way where it was dropped to three point oh two. And now it's going to be dropped to two point five one. So I don't know who else's cost of living is going down by a percent and a half. But this is, this is the challenge we face year after year after year. Because we make assumptions that are given to us, we, we try to take care of our staff on an ongoing basis and then everything is taken away from us. And so when I say what we are doing is not working, this is what I am talking about. Like we have to be able to rely on the money that is promised to us so that we can take care of people and not have to worry about it on the back end. And every year, we have to worry about it on the back end because it changes. And it's changing by significant numbers. A percent and a half for us from two years ago, that's a significant amount of money. And so I, I just, I, I, I don't want it to be something that is understated. Like it is, this is a challenge year in and year out, so.
Uh, no, go ahead.
Just a comment, and it's kind of to piggyback off what you're saying. I, I don't know any organization that can operate in this way. And it really is frustrating because it impacts the students and our ability to deliver for them. And so, you know, I, I, I agree, they, they need to get it together, the state, the feds, all of them. They need to look at what we are dealing with and come up with a better solution because no organization, public or private, can operate in this manner. It's just impossible.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we are still on item eighteen. So I'm going to go ahead and call for a motion to approve in a second.
A second.
So we have a second from member Sneed and, I'm sorry.
Mary.
Motion from Sneed.
Okay.
And a second from Donna Georgina. And so we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Preferential vote for Xavier Munoz.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And everybody else saying in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, so the motion passes five zero. We're now on to item number nineteen, which calls for the adoption of resolution twenty five, twenty six dash fourteen regarding the Government Accounting Standards Board, Gatsby number fifty four, committed fund balance for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. We have a motion to approve in a second, please.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Sorry, didn't hear that right. Are there any comments or questions at this point? No? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote then. Student member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay, and everybody else, please say.
It's a roll call.
Oh, there, you're right, I got the correction right here even. Okay. Thank you. So, member Georgina?
Yes.
I may yes. Member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Bill?
Yes.
And member Espinoza?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to item number twenty, which calls for the approval of the twenty four, twenty five annual and five year development fees. I guess we'll hold off on taking the motion and Connie, do you have something you want to share?
Yeah, I do. So the government code six, six, zero, zero, one, six, six, zero, six required a district in regarding of developer fee. We have to, within the one hundred eighty days after the end of fiscal year, we have to share the annual report with the community. And then also require the board to review the report and make the decision. And they are not only, they are fifteen days for the regular board meeting. So we did release our information post in the website and including the front of the district office, so the available report. And the annual report is basically say that twenty four, twenty five school year, the district received a revenue of, of over seven hundred thousand dollars. I, I always remember Donna, the question when I first come here. And Donna, this is really, I think this is the highest dollar amount we receive since I come to the district. I think I have no doubt probably will be the highest for one long time. So regularly, we normally receive the developer fee in our districts around three hundred thousand dollars. Sometime I saw, since I come here, there's one year is around five hundred thousand dollars. But the, the seven hundred, seven thousand, three hundred, two hundred, seven hundred, three thousand, two hundred forty nine dollars actually is the first time. So the interest, the fee, interest rate and plus the Gatsby required the fair market, fair market value adjustment. We last year, we actually received total revenues eight thousand four hundred sixty, eight hundred forty six thousand, two hundred fifty four dollars. And we did spend some money and for the two school side marquee. And one is for the covert marquee and there long marquee. And we don't only use the developer fee as only sources to fix them, fix upgrade their marquee, marquee. We also, also use other funding sources. So that is the, and also twenty four, twenty five, we, our district have a practice once the state to release their new rate for developer fee, level one for both commercial and residential. And we also did our own justification study. So last study allowed us to, level one fee, we are actually match the state rate is five dollar, win seven for the residential. And then eight four cents for the commercial. So as, as a result that. So, um, as a, as a result that at the end of twenty four, twenty five school year, our developer fee is actually three point seven million dollars, any fund advance. That is the, um, the plan, as I mentioned in my, my presentation there, we're going to, that is also transition to the five year plan. The reason I put the annual and five year together is I don't want to, um, anybody forget for whatever reason. So we just automatically do every year submitted requirement. So five year plan is basically ask us, you know, what the future project, the district think about and what's related, the spending and, and the developer fee. As I mentioned that, um, we did see the growing in our high school. And there, um, our consultant advised us that because we only have one high school and then we are, we, we are allowed to spend the developer fee for the high school project. So, um, in addition to the developer fee, we also, of, of course, we use the bond money. We also use the capital outlay, the funded forty, uh, try to finish our high school sports complex project.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions for Connie? I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Student board member Munoz?
Yeah.
Oh, motion.
Oh, that'd help, huh?
I'll move.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, motion from member Georgina, second from member Espinoza. And now I'll call for the vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, everybody else, please say aye if you agree.
Aye.
Anybody nay? No? Okay, so the motion carries five zero. With that, we're on to the consent agenda, which includes routine items approved by one motion and one vote unless a member of the board or the audience requests that any item be reviewed and voted upon separately. A motion to approve, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion from member Georgina, second from member Bill. No comments or questions, I, I mean. So I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Uh, preferential vote, student board member Munoz?
Yes.
And everybody else, please say aye if you agree.
Aye.
Aye.
And any nays? Because the motion carries five zero. That, we're on to item number thirty, board requests slash comments. And I don't believe we have anything scheduled, no, we don't. So is there anything, anybody want to bring up something new to discuss on item thirty, or should we move on?
Move on.
Move on, okay. Uh, so item thirty one, uh, there's nothing that's scheduled. So, or item thirty two, which calls for an adjournment. Have a motion and a second to adjourn, please.
I'll motion.
Motion from members.
Second.
Espinoza?
Yes.
Student member Munoz is the second. Uh, and we'll start with student board, student, yeah, tired. Student board member Munoz, vote your vote.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And, um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody nay? Motion carries five zero, we are done.
Getting back into the swing, takes a minute.